Firefighter four for a step increase for years of service with a salary change from seventy-eight, four forty-seven to eighty thousand, eight oh one, effective seven, one twenty-five. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, fire chief, for Richard Petrie. Firefighter four for a step increase for years of service with a salary change from eighty thousand, eight hundred and one to eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's effective seven, one twenty-five. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, fire chief, for John Graham. Firefighter three for a step increase for years of service with salary change from sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars to sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and five hundred and twenty-one dollars, effective seven, one twenty-five. Change of status received from Martin Roberts, fire chief, or Stephen Sawyer, lieutenant, for a step increase for years of service with salary change from eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars to eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, effective seven, one twenty, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Joshua Schackey. Corporal for a step increase of years of service for annual salary of seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to seventy-four thousand, forty-three dollars, effective seven, thirty, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Chelsea McBee. Corporal for a step increase for years of service with annual salary change from seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to seventy-four thousand, forty-three dollars, effective seven, thirty, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Sean Donegan. Deputy three for a step increase for years of service with annual salary change from sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars to seventy thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, effective seven, thirty, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Chad Jones, deputy three, for a step increase for years of service with an annual salary change from seventy-six thousand, two hundred and five dollars to seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, effective seven, thirty-one, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Lawrence Meeks, to be promoted from deputy two to corporal with an annual salary change from fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars to seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, effective six, twenty-six, twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Amber Whitman, deputy three, for a step increase for years of service with an annual salary change from seventy thousand, eight hundred and two to seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, effective seven, one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, sheriff for Andrew Peck, who'll be promoted from deputy three to a corporal with an annual salary change from sixty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars to seventy-four thousand, forty-five dollars, and that is effective seven, one twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Chad Weinbrenner, deputy county administrator, for Daniel Connor, custodian, effective six, thirty, twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, director of emergency communications. Thomas Jones, telecommunicator one, effective seven, eight, twenty-five. And a letter of resignation received from the Honorable Michelle Schappert, sergeant clerk, for Sandra Bittner, deputy clerk, effective seven, two, twenty-five. And we get down to the minutes, we need to approve the June seventeenth minutes. Commissioner Boyd was not present, so I like the motion to approve those minutes.
I move.
Been moved and seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that Commissioner Boyd abstained. Also on June twenty-sixth, President Gokunier was not president. I need a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain. As have it. Thank you. Have a bond reduction. Have Doug Smith, our engineer, bond reduction for the lakes of Martinsburg, phase one, section three, lots forty-one through fifty-nine, and that is BCP file number twenty-five oh one, dash zero three seven, twenty-two zero four, dash one oh two, and number eighty-five dash oh three, and that's LOC number SB nine one three, zero nine three, zero 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 one. And our engineer is making that recommendation. We have a bond reduction for Southbrook, section two, grading, BCP file number twenty-five oh one, dash zero three three, tied to BCP file number twenty-three four oh seven, dash two oh four, and twenty-three oh four, dash zero two seven seven. And that's a grading bond number zero eight three two five zero one, and engineering also makes that recommendation. And we have a job description that Chad will go over with us here for just.
Mr. President, before we start that, I just have one quick question about the changes in status. So as we're going through all of the different changes in status, most of those look pretty normal, people getting, you know, taking one step, or could be for their time in service. The only question I have for is for the sheriff has a change from a deputy two to a corporal, which is a change in salary of over eleven thousand dollars, going from a deputy two to a corporal. So is that a double jump? Is that moving from?
Yeah.
Could you just give me, I'd just like to have a little bit of background on one. Most of these salary increases look like they'd be around two to four thousand dollars, which is typical for time in service and for jumps, but this one jumped out at me because it's over eleven thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. So the way the sheriff's scales are written, that does jump a position. It jumps to deputy three position, which is not a prerequisite for the corporal job for civil service. The deputy, I believe, did test high enough to qualify for that position. Typically, you see most of those positions go from deputy three to corporal. I don't think it's incredibly common they go deputy two into corporal, but in this case, they did. So he did jump one entire salary band, which accounts for the larger.
We have a good, intelligent employee who we think has moved to that job, and they're being rewarded for their.
There was a promotional examination that got him there.
Okay. Just wanted to do a little clarification on this, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Chad. Go on to your new job description, please.
Yes, sir. The sheriff is requesting a change to an existing job description. Currently, animal control has one part-time position, which is a part-time animal control officer. They want to take that position. The salary will not change, but they want to reclassify that job as a kennel attendant. I believe the intention is to have someone there up to about twenty hours a week to take care of the building, the kennels and assist, caring for the animals. That job description is attached. It's a budget-neutral change. It just needs your approval to go into effect. And they are recruiting currently for filling that role.
Okay. All right. And the next one is the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-three EMPG grant, and that's a grant through the state for our emergency management. It's a fifty percent grant request. And that total amount there will be a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, and that's, that grants an annual grant.
Yes, and that offsets fifty percent of the salaries of your director of emergency management and your emergency manager.
So we're in for one nineteen. They're in for one nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. We have nothing from the assessor this week. Thank you, Doug. Board and meeting reports, Commissioner Boyd.
I had a roundhouse meeting last night. Good bit going on over there right now. We have got the green light to go ahead from the state to finish the elevator finally, to get that done, so that's taking place. We did receive another allotment that was held up somewhere, but it came from former Senator President, Senate President Craig Blair, another ten thousand dollars. That was towards the HVAC system. Commissioner Whitaker over there was so kind to come down this weekend and, or Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And finish the trench to move the gas line, so we can have Mountaineer gas come out either tomorrow or Monday to put in the meter, to finish the gas lines for the HVAC, and the electrical upgrade is well underway to finish the upgrade, to finally finish all the HVAC down there. So that should be done, hopefully, in the next few weeks, I would think. Also, we were supposed to get a report back from the architectural firm. The name has escaped me. I left my paper this morning, but for the overall scope of project, to do that master plan down there, to start spending the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we received from Mansion and Capito last year, same money that you guys, we all got for the Inwood Park. So they were supposed to have that in yesterday. They're going to have it in Friday. We're going to review it, see if there's any changes that need done, and then hopefully get to work on that project. And they seem confident that there'll be money, not only for the master drawings for the whole project, but also to do the concrete floor downstairs and maybe a little more. So that's very promising. Like I said, that was supposed to be in yesterday. They asked for a couple more days. They weren't quite finished, so that should come in Friday morning, tomorrow morning, and moving forward with that. The library did a fundraiser, a Comic-Con down there, had over eleven hundred people, real good turnout. That went well. The farmer's market's been rolling along on Saturdays, and that's where we stand.
And you go start doing evening markets?
There is a evening market once a month. The next evening market, I believe, is, and actually, the next evening market, the Development Authority is participating as well, and they're inviting anyone who has been in their Raise Up Berkeley program to, they're sponsoring a booth for any of them who have a valid business license to be there and advertise their business at the next night market. And I believe the next night market is, we moved them to Saturdays, yes. So the next night market is on the nineteenth of July.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hardy.
I had a planning commission meeting on Monday night. It was your typical planning commission meeting. We had about six public hearings, and all those kind of went off without a hitch, and that's the only meeting that I've had so far this week. Looking forward to a couple meetings next week. I know that me and President Gokunier have a meeting with the Health Department next week, and also going to have another meeting with Senator Capito's office next week, so looking forward to those meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
No meetings yet, but they're coming up next week. But we did attend the Fourth of July celebration out at the Independence Day at the airport, which I think, other than the hard rain that came down right before the fireworks, I think it was a good day, so. Good music. It was very well attended, so. My thanks to CMC Steel for helping always provide that community project. Back to the county.
Yeah, and thank the Martinsburg Airport Foundation and Nick. Nick works really hard on pulling all that together. We appreciate that. It's a good time. Commissioner Kelly.
Slow week last week, but we did have a meeting, yourself and I, with the Development Authority, with several players representing the data center that's going to be built here in Berkeley County, out behind the hospice facility. I was, I'm sure you were too, it was talked afterwards, Eddie, but I was very pleased with the message that they sent to us and how they handled themselves, and it seems like a really legitimate group of people that I'm looking forward to having them as a business here in Berkeley County, to say the least. Kind of pressed them on some dates, and they hope to break ground, actually, by the spring of next year. They hope to start building by July of next year, and they hope to open by July of twenty-seven, so. And of course, they're doing the two buildings here in Berkeley County first before they do the facilities in Jefferson later, so. I'm looking forward to having them in our community, and I think they were very pleased on their end with our planning office and our staff here at the county, and it just seems like it's going to be a really good relationship.
Yeah, I mean, they were very open, very willing to answer all of our questions, and I think they want to be, and even when we met with the owners of the corporation, you know, they want to be a good neighbor here, and we stressed upon them our request to make sure that the hospice facility was protected as much as possible and that we didn't intrude on them, who want to be a good neighbor, and they assured us that they understood all that, so. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
That's all I have.
I had a nine-on-one advisory board meeting this week. You know, out of the nine new employees that they hired, they currently have six that are actually starting to dispatch. They will be reapplying for their accreditation between October and November. Their new CAD will be going online, what they call CAD Flex will be going online February the twenty-fourth. And also, they had a school tabletop exercise that all of our agencies protected, or actually participated in with the school system. They said it went very well. Had a Development Authority meeting this week, actually, two separate meetings, had a property management meeting to go over the rents and stuff of the two buildings, and which are, you know, probably, I think they're all full right now, but we've got, we do have some vacancies coming up, and, you know, with the Development Authority, the finances are strong, and we still have additional businesses looking to locate here. As Steve mentioned, we did meet with their engineering firm that's going to do the data center that's coming. Very good meeting, very open discussion. John and I have a one o'clock meeting this afternoon with a solar company wanting to locate here, and I have a firewood meeting tonight, so.
Question. With these solar people, is there any way to talk to them about possibly doing solar over parking lots versus over open land?
I think it's probably too far along for this project for their.
Well, I'm just saying in general.
Future projects, yeah. I think, I think you'll probably look for like corporate partners with that, say maybe like WVU East, for those, you know, corporate partnerships to do those type things.
Because I mean, even like Procter and Gamble, I don't know how big their parking lots are out there, but like, in Jamaica, the airport, they've done the whole parking lot, and it's like a roof parking lot, but, you know, it's that aluminum thing, but it's all solar panels above it, so that's all collecting solar, and it gives dry space for parking, sort of, you know, there's space between them. It's not like it's a fully enclosed roof, but it's that sort of thing, and then, you know, you're doing it over parking lots versus doing it over grass and land that, you know, could be used for other things, but. Is this where we make motions to add people to the board?
Yes, sir.
If it's okay, I'd like to make a motion to add Mark Thompson to the Roundhouse Authority.
You have a motion to appoint Mark Thompson to the Martin County Roundhouse Authority?
I'll second that motion.
Been seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. And I think we have another appointment.
I have two. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jim Moffett to the Emergency Ambulance Authority.
It's been.
Second.
Proper motion and seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it.
And I would like to also motion to have John Myers reappointed to the Stormwater Authority.
Yes, sir. It's been properly moved and seconded in further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Okay. Chad, we're close enough. Chad, we're close enough.
Got John for six more years.
Yeah. Well, I tell you what, John's a solid guy on that board.
He is a solid guy. He's a good person.
I think we're close enough that we can open the RFP, or not open the RFP, but discuss the RFP that Chad.
Yes, sir.
For a compact pickup.
RFP today is for a compact four-by-four extended cab pickup truck. I believe this is a bid for a replacement for animal control. It looks like you've received three bids. You do have a certification, a publication on hand. Everything's good. Yes, that is correct. Three bids have been received.
Chad, while we're waiting, when do you expect to have your tone about the Inwood Park recommendation?
Next week.
Next week?
Yes, sir. This first one is from Whiteside Chevrolet as for a 2025 Chevy Colorado. $42,000, and it's an in-stock vehicle.
I think that's a six. Good luck with that one.
Next one is for a 2025 F-150, $46,000, Keystone Ford out of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania. Excuse me?
Keystone.
Keystone Ford out of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania.
Oh, you're going to like this one.
This is from Hagerstown Ford for a 2025 Ford Ranger, an amount of $36,965.84.
We're into the commercial. If you don't like it, in a few weeks, you can take it back in.
What'd they say?
In exchange.
What'd they say? Okay. Takes care of that. Next up, we have Tara Mason, founder and executive director of the Hope Dealer Project, a proclamation for Berkeley County goes purple. Good morning. Yeah, come forward, please. Good to see you.
Yes, good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, so pardon me here, I have some notes, because if I didn't have my notes, I'd forget everything.
We have notes too.
So good morning and thank you for having us. We're honored to join you on behalf of the Hope Dealer Project, where I am the founder and the executive director. In 2023, West Virginia began the journey of making history as the first state in the U.S. to officially go purple during National Recovery Month. As a born and raised Mountaineer, my passion is deeply rooted in reclaiming our state's identity. That's right. Taking our state back from the label of having the highest overdose rate. The mission is to shift the narrative so that West Virginia no longer is known for tragedy, but for being the first state in the U.S. history to go purple during National Recovery Month. This initiative isn't about one organization. It's about communities, counties, and individuals coming together to break the silence, save lives, and celebrate recovery. Purple lights, ribbons, community events, outreach efforts, help us start conversations that can change the outcomes. Every purple display becomes a beacon of hope. The proclamation that Berkeley County is here to sign today is symbolic. It's a statement of solidarity and commitment to healing, education, and prevention. We invite you to participate in lighting homes, schools, offices, and landmarks in purple, sharing recovery stories, and wearing purple, and engaging in social media throughout the month of September. So in closing, I, the founder and the executive director, see you, Berkeley County, and thank you for turning on the purple light. You are a part of something bigger, a movement of healing, of unity, and purpose, and together we will show the nation what it truly means to be Mountaineer strong. And soon enough, our story will be long written by overdose statistics, but by our strength, recovery, and unstoppable hope.
Very good. And I would like to just last, read the last portion of the proclamation, if you don't mind. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission in the state of West Virginia that has hereby proclaimed the month of September 2025 to be Berkeley County goes purple in the county of Berkeley and call upon the citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. The Berkeley County Commission encourages the community to wear purple, light up your home and business in purple lights, tie a purple ribbon on your tree, fence, or door, and make a purple heart display, or get creative and display purple another way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second, and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's still a lot of work to do.
Where'd you grow up in West Virginia?
Right here in Martinsburg. Born and raised at King Daughters. Went to Martinsburg, graduated in '89.
It's obviously a problem in all 55 counties in West Virginia, not just, other than West Virginia, a lot of people think we're here, but it's all everywhere.
Absolutely.
But we thank you for your time and effort and involvement, so thank you for that.
Thank you. It's a heavy lift, but we've got many, many of the counties on board, more than half. We still have scheduling to get for the rest of the month, but they're all joining.
Are you going all over the state to do proclamations, or do you have other?
I do have additional purple ambassadors throughout the six regions of the state. McDowell Sound signed yesterday.
Fifty-five counties, you're going to be busy.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a great day.
We'll get a picture for the president?
Yeah.
Want to take a break?
Just a few minutes. Okay. Just hang on a minute. Yeah. Okay. Next up, we have Deborah Hammond with the William Henshaw Chapter, a proclamation for Independence Day. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Deborah Hammond, and I am the region of the William Henshaw Chapter. I have with me today Shelley Hamilton, who is our new incoming recording secretary. And we come before you again with a proclamation. As I mentioned when I was here for the Flag Day proclamation, we have several important pillars of DAR, historic preservation, education, literacy, any information that we can provide the public on issues of patriotism and, of course, our constitution. And as we're entering now into the 250th year of our nation, it's essential that we talk about how we came to this point, and of course, our Independence Day proclamation outlines some of those notifications or some of those aspects of that journey.
Yes, ma'am. And I would also like to, as I did just previously, read the resolved. Therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission comrades July 4th, 2025 is Independence Day, and urge all citizens in joining and celebrating America's birthday in their traditional fashion. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's very, it's a very big deal, and, you know, a lot of people celebrate it in a lot of different ways, but, you know, we're all pretty proud of that, so.
Absolutely. Yes, and keeping that history out there and at the forefront is very essential.
Yes, ma'am.
Get ready for next year.
Absolutely. It's going to be big.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
Been properly moved?
Second.
And second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Will. You ready to go, sir?
Commission, this morning, we have 30 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of July 2025. All estates proposed for settlement this morning are identical to those found in your read-ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties of estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for approval of the 30 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of July 2025.
Well, I have, I do have a question.
Sure.
Because at 10:45, we're scheduled to, for an estate hearing for Ann Marie Jeffords.
That's correct.
And I see her in that 30. Should, is that okay to have her up there?
It is. So it is noted that that is an interim settlement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the 30 estate accounts as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Very much.
Okay. All right, we're going to take a few-minute break so we can get a few pictures and people can get on their way.
All right, we're back in session.
Yes, Commission, in resuming the Anna Marie Jeffords estate, as I say, this involves the removal or resignation of a personal representative. I have already alluded to the facts. I won't force you to go through my ramblings again, but I will ask that the petitioner, if he so wishes, Mr. Jeffords, to speak to the commission. Again, only he doesn't have to, but if he wishes to, you're free and welcome to do so, sir.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Stephen Jeffords.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is he going to be sworn in?
Sorry?
Is he going to be sworn in?
Very likely, yes.
For the testimony you're about to give us the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
A few days after my wife's, you know, I was getting texts from the daughter, being harassed about coming over and taking assets. And I was trying to inform her that it's under probation. And her sister, Donna Lee, who was executor at the time, sent a letter saying that she gave the key to the daughter to come into the house and take what she wanted, some personal properties she said was hers. I wasn't home at the time, and when I got there, my driveway was blocked. And they tried to force their entry in the side door in my garage, to get some damage too. So the time I got in there, my garage door was open, and that's how they got access into the house.
Excuse me. This your residence? It's where you live?
Yes.
Okay.
I called the police department and made a report about it. And they said that it had to be a civil matter.
Okay. Is that the statement you want to make? I mean, is that...
Yes, well, I wanted to be appointed, control of my wife's estate, so I can put this to a close without being harassed anymore about family.
And I believe the respondent's attorney, Mr. Pat Henry, is also here if he wishes to.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Please state your name.
Patrick Henry, and I am the attorney for Donna Steiner, who is the current executrix of the estate. She has filed a petition to withdraw as the personal representative. It is apparent that she and the surviving husband of the decedent do not get along. During my initial interview with her, I asked her why in the world she wanted to put herself through that grief, and she wisely said, "I don't," which resulted in us filing our petition. Unfortunately, because it was being prepared by an attorney, it was a little slower than the petition for removal filed by the husband. The only items that were removed were specific items that were listed and discussed between the daughter of the decedent and the personal representative regarding specific sentimental items, for which the executrix believed that there was no interest, or should be no interest, by the husband in those items since they were old family items. We are both seeking the same purpose. My only purpose in appearing today is essentially that a removal has with it a connotation of bad conduct, whereas a petition for resignation would have a neutral connotation. And we're simply asking for that neutral connotation as far as he is welcome then to qualify and handle the estate. The real estate where he's residing is subject to debt. We are not in a position where we are aware of any assets at all with which to pay the mortgage payments. And as a result, whatever might happen with the real estate is his call. Let him make the choice.
Thank you.
If the Commission has any questions?
I don't have any. Does anybody else have any?
Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, you've heard both sides. As we say, we have apparently two different petitions, both, as Mr. Henry alluded to, seeking the same goal, that the personal representative, current Ms. Steiner, no longer continue to serve and Mr. Jeffords take her place in that role. Mr. Jeffords, though not named as the executor in the decedent's will, he is the sole beneficiary and thus would not have to be served bond. So that makes the matter a bit clearer. With that, and without further comment from either interested party, I ask for this commission's consideration for Donna Lee Steiner's resignation from personal representative as the estate's executrix.
Very good. Okay, have a motion to remove Donna...
Except her resignation.
Except the resignation.
I would so move, except her resignation as executor.
I'll second.
Are we going to name him, or are you...
We'll go ahead and have him sign the appropriate documents downstairs once the resignation is approved by this...
This is a resignation versus a...
Removal.
Yes.
That is correct.
Resignation.
Right. Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded in further discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abs, have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. As this is a somewhat unique case, I will have to form an order personally, so I will have that on public record by the end of the day.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, let's go ahead and end our business for the day. Are there any items from the public? We understand. Yes, sir. Let the record show there are no items from the public. We do have executive session, and there will be no action taken for legal reasons. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
All right.